Welcome to the Monday, March sixth, two thousand twenty-three, your regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona. We're ready for a pledge of allegiance. Laura, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? You're the only Lori in here. Oh, there's more, okay. Public announcements. The first thing is, we have a momentous anniversary coming up. And we're gonna have a celebration on March sixteenth. Our town manager, Kerry Direct, has achieved twenty-five years with the town. Smiled, a bigger one smiled than that, yeah. So there's gonna be a celebration from three thirty until five o'clock, March sixteenth. I guess it's a reception type of a, of an event, so anyone who wants to come is invited. I'm sorry. It's here. Some other announcements. The Maricopa County Associate of Governments, the Executive Director and Assistant and Deputy Director, were here last week. I don't want to steal Kerry's thunder if she wants to expand on this, but they're the local agency that runs everything. It's all the, they do the freeways and the light rail and homelessness and just a whole range of things. But we had them out here so that we can become active and especially they control a lot of federal money. They're the ones that make decisions on where transportation funds goes to a large extent, and we need some funds for Cave Creek Road for, especially for pedestrian safety. They did buy us a street sweeper and coming back in town last week, I saw it running around. There were two people in there. I guess they were, they were taking turns with this new truck and it's, it's quite a piece of equipment. The second is that intrusive legislation continues. This, this session of the House of Representatives and the Senate. I can, it's an attack on cities and towns. It's just unbelievable. We've got two additional items on the agenda tonight to deal with that. We are working through the, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns mainly. They're the ones that do our lobbying for us, although some of us have been down lobbying our law legislatures personally because these things are, will attack both our revenue and our ability to zone. They essentially take away your zoning rights across the state for towns bigger than us, but you know, how long before it hits us? It's just gonna be a disaster for the state of Arizona. Next, the staff is working with Senator Kelly's office on water grants. Kerry, maybe you could expand on that either now or during your session, whichever you'd like to do. Okay. And finally, we're working with CAP to see if we can get some support with, with Senator Kelly's office, some more push behind getting some more funds to help us with our Phoenix Interconnect project. The staff, Kerry and Vice Mayor Roy are working on that. And with that, we will go. Roll call, please. I mean, Coach today.
I did a silent one, so. See, okay. I am happy to call.
That's all right. We'll now go to call to the public.
Evelyn Johnson.
Need to turn your microphone on. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members. On behalf of the Cave Creek Museum Board of Directors Volunteers, I wanted to express our thanks for your attendance to our groundbreaking ceremony at the end of February. It was emotional and very well attended, and I hope you will follow the progress as we go forward. And thank you all for your support.
No addition, additional speakers.
Town manager's report.
Mayor, members of council and the public. As the mayor stated that we are applying to both Senator Kelly and Senator Cinema's office for congressional direct funding, requesting an amount of two point five million dollars that would be used towards the Phoenix Interconnect, which would add reliability and redundancy to our water system, the water resources and water system by working through the city of Phoenix and having a second connection where they would, the city of Phoenix would deliver, treat and deliver a portion of the town CAP water. And so we are working to gather letters of support. The Vice Mayor prepared a letter and sent that off to CAP requesting a letter of support. We'll be seeking one from the mayor of City of Phoenix and others. And we hope to be successful in this highly competitive process. More locally, we have a new video library that we've just established, and we have our first two videos we will be sending out to our social media and will be available online. The first has to do with the Cave Creek boundaries. We get a lot of questions about who lives in Cave Creek. Cave Creek addresses aren't necessarily in the town, and we get a lot of calls daily, actually, still, all these years. And so this will help with that sort of educational material. There's another one about the town and our zoning districts and what they mean, what each category means and where they are. We have prepared a newsletter from the town that should be in your mailboxes the first week in April that contains a QR code, which will also be on our website for the wildland fire survey. We put one out about a year and a half or so ago, maybe two years ago, and we'd like to follow up on how we are doing and with our fire service and prevention of, of wildland fires in the town. Uh, let's see, what else? We've got the brush drop off, our first one this season, this Saturday, March eleventh, down at the wastewater treatment property on Carefree Highway. It begins at eight o'clock and we're open there to, until noon, and there's no cost to residents of the town of Cave Creek. So we're encouraging you to sort of clean up your property and have proper defensible space because the, the fire season, you know, the dry season is upon us. So I think that's everything. And I think I missed, Mayor, I think that's everything.
I have a quick question for me. Will will the local landmarks end up in the video library? Do we have a plan about?
We, we just made our first small videos.
And it's great.
Baby steps, but yes, we plan many more videos. We have a lot of topics to, to get to. We've had a kind of iron out the process of how we make them and do the voiceover and
Great.
Yeah, it's a really neat process, but we'll get there.
And then one, one other quick one. We did us, our strategic planning work. Where, where is that? When will we see the draft?
We should have had that already. I sent in two emails actually to finalize that up, so we need to get that back because we have budget coming and it's all, our budget is based on the strategic plan and how we're meeting those goals. So it's really important to get that back soon. So we will get it and it'll be shared with the council.
Thank you.
Councilperson Bunch is usually the one to talk about this, but it's globe chamomile. We've had a good winter of precipitation. There's a lot of vegetation growing, particularly the globe chamomile. It's a special problem, but it is a fire hazard. And we saw that back in two thousand twenty, the way that the globe chamomile, once it dries out, it's almost like having matchsticks in your yard. So be aware that this is a special danger for fires. Did I do that right, Ernie?
You did good. And each one of those pretty little yellow balls, we've got about four hundred seeds in them, so.
Drive by my house, you'll see somebody with a backpack sprayer going over my five acres one step at a time.
It's expensive.
Oh, on the consent agenda tonight, the approval of the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting minutes, and we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Motion carries. General agenda items, lots of laws and legal stuff tonight. Council discussion approval to a purchase, oops, excuse me. I thought we weren't going to spend any money tonight. I forgot about this. Council discussion approval to purchase a case five eighty SN backhoe from Suns Ray Machinery for an amount up to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, three hundred, four, one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, the town engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we took bids from three different vendors for equivalent sized backhoes that will be shared between Public Works and Utilities. The case backhoe ended up being the most cost effective for us. They also, we're going to take our nineteen ninety-three backhoe in for a trade-in, which basically pays the taxes on it. And so that, yeah, I will be here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council. Seeing none, do we have a motion? Oh, excuse me. You missed me.
Oh, sorry.
Probably comment on this.
There's no one wishing to speak.
Keep for a motion from council.
I'll move to approve purchase of a case five eight zero SN backhoe from Suns, Suns Ray Machinery for an amount of up to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, three hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second. Comments from council. You had the motion?
Yeah, we have a staff that keeps up with the needs of the town. We truly appreciate it.
Good machine. Sounds like it's shared between a couple of departments, so optional use there.
Yes, between distribution on the utility side and the public work side so that it's a machine that get, will get plenty of use.
Other comments. Seeing none, roll call plates.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, council discussion approval resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero two resolution of the mayor and town council of town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, declaring the certain document filed with the town clerk entitled Short Term Rental Public Health and Safety Protections as a public record pursuant to ARS nine dash eight zero two. Does anybody know what that little squiggly is? Title, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Placed on agenda by the Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I actually informed Bill earlier that he would be, he would be presenting this, these cases related to the town code. The first obviously is a resolution, and the reason we do a resolution in front of an ordinance is so that we're declaring it a public record, so we don't have to pay to run a, a full newspaper of all the text and everything with it. So it's just one way that state law allows us to adopt an ordinance by, by first considering this resolution and all turnover to Bill to go through the details of that. Thank you.
Mayor, the two go hand in hand. What we, number, the resolution pending is to actually go through the text. So this would be an appropriate time to discuss the text. And then if you agree, then you would adopt the text as a public record. And then you would approve it in the ordinance. What that means is you don't have to take all these pages and publish them. That's why we do two steps. So if you, you could either take them simultaneously, or I'll just go through the text and outline the code provisions and ask the question. Is that, was that okay to go that route?
Whatever route you'd like to go.
I think that'd be the best. Odyssey of short term rentals really shows tension between property owners. With the owners of property wishing to rent them out on a short-term basis, having certain rights and the neighbors having certain rights, and generally it's the neighbors who will be talking to you. About ten years ago, as cities and towns were trying to regulate short-term rentals, the legislature stepped in, as you described, Mr. Mayor, our legislature is very, very assertive sometimes. And drafted legislation that made it almost impossible to regulate short-term rentals. Their argument was a short-term rental is a residential use. They should be treated like any residents. You can't, you don't impose these requirements when I rent my house. Therefore, you can't impose the requirements now. Since then, many jurisdictions have tried to enforce. So Sedona took a stab at it about seven years ago, and you may recall, there isn't, there is a certain statute where one legislature can write, oh, sorry, can write, can, can write a, a letter to the AG. And if the AG believes it might have some merit, can threaten to take the, all the state's shared revenue from that jurisdiction. Well, that happens to Sedona. Sedona tried to draft an ordinance, worked with it really, really rigorously, and we're gonna go through provisions in your code that I think work. And they decided it wasn't worth the risk of losing their state's shared revenue. Thankfully, there's been some at the legislature beginning to combat the VRBO lobby. And there was legislation drafted last, in twenty twenty-two, that is actually quite good. And, and what, and other jurisdictions, Scottsdale and Fountain Hills have both tried it. Fountain Hills was, was challenged on the same type of tactic that Sedona was challenged. And the AG blessed it. And so they really gave us a variety of ways that we, we, you can control short-term rentals and protect the neighbors. I'll walk through, this really is a pretty, very, I think, a good set of procedures that work. I'll outline for you upfront what they are. What we're doing is, the new statute allows you to have a license. They must, sorry, to require a license. That's good. Because bluntly, you wanna make, you wanna make it as difficult as you can for the owner who wants to rent his or her house on a short-term basis. You force them to get a sales tax license. That too is good because that generates some revenue. You force them to get a business license. That too is good because it gives you regulatory control so that you can step in and try to protect neighbors, neighborhoods that are being infected with short-term rentals. But the, the, and you can charge, the fines are astronomical, but there's from, actually, in some jurisdictions like, like, like this, Scottsdale, they really had to jack the fines up because some people just wanted to pay the fines. And then you, you're allowed, you're allowed to charge fees. And then finally, you're allowed to impose requirements. For example, this is a great one. One jurisdiction had really poor cell coverage. So they required, and the AG accepted it, that every floor had to have a landline. How painful is that? I mean, that's good. I mean, if your goal is, is to make, to make in the name of public safety, and that's what we're doing here. We're not zoning, we're protecting public safety. We're gonna make them get a landline, and it worked because they had bad cell coverage. I don't think you have bad cell coverage. We've got some ideas. So that's where we've been. This is a good tool. I'll walk you through it and then ask for questions. I won't go line by line. If you go on page twenty-seven, this is really the guts of it. They have to have a license and they have to pay the fees. And if they don't, there's a, right off the bat, a thousand dollars fines. Then there's a fee for two fifty. Then you put them on notice, and after we pass this ordinance, you're gonna have to put everybody on notice. And then if they don't apply, they pay another thousand dollar fee every thirty days.
Can I just interject very quickly?
Yes.
So. Thank you. Is this a template from Scottsdale?
No, 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 no.
You created this specifically for Cave Creek?
No, because I got my head handed to me in Jerome. I tried to do this twelve years ago, the Coldwater Institute, clobbered us. Clobbered us. And so, but, but the law wasn't with me. And so what I did was, I read the AG opinion. The clone is really Fountain Hills. That's the one that the AG blessed. And when I read it, I go, this is really good. I'd be happy to send you the AG opinion. What they, they went through and, and accepted all the things we're gonna talk about here.
Okay.
That makes sure a property owner had, in the name of public safety, has a map, a floor plan, escape routes, has, has names of people to contact. One, in this provision, the emergency contact has to respond in twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours. See, the, the, the problem is that people are just renting out their homes and, and you, you, the government are trying to protect not only the neighbors, but protect the people who are occupying the short-term rental. So no, I didn't just, we didn't just copy this from Scottsdale. I took, I took from my failed efforts in Jerome. I took from Sedona. I took from Fountain Hills, and I took from, from Scottsdale. The Scottsdale and Fountain Hills are the best. Fountain Hills was best, and I'll walk you through to, to where they're really requiring you to impose licenses. But before walking in here, I talked to your marshal. Scottsdale is finding a significant enforcement. How do you, when you have thousands of short-term rentals, what do you do if they don't get the license? So, and that, that's, that's it. That, that is the initial predicate. Right now, when you adopt this, thirty days later, you tell people to get the license. My, my view is, having worked for you all, you're not a jurisdiction that I think likes to have your law enforcement out looking for violation. Maybe you are, I don't know. I think generally, it's, it'll be complaint-based. So that if they, if someone has a neighbor who, who is, who has a boisterous activity, Luke can then look on VRBO, see if they're, if they're, they're advertising, and they all are, then you unleash the marshal, go get them. Yes, sir.
What, can you define a short-term rental for us?
Less than thirty days.
Okay.
Using a residence, using a residence, not, 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 not an RV, using a resident, using a building.
Does that, does that mean that any rental then?
No.
No, this is short-term.
That's, that's. If you rented your house out, there was no distinction between me renting your house for a year versus renting it out for people to Super Bowl.
And is there a distinction?
Yes, yes, thirty days.
Okay.
And I have a question. You, you had talked about the way that they advertise these. Can the town be privy to the advertisement so that we can?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's what this guy in the marshal is gonna do. I mean, once, once someone complains, you get on.
No, I mean, the advertising, as people describe the short-term rental. Should we have?
Boy, I don't know if you want to buy that problem. You, you mean, making sure the advertising is correct?
Correct.
This doesn't allow that. And as your town attorney, I think you're buying problems if you try to police up the advertising because you, you don't know.
The only thing you can really do is, is identify the geographic coordinates and do a search within Verbo or HomeAway or any of those to identify which ones are in the town of Cave Creek.
But here, when you go, when you go on page twenty-eight, I was told by the manager that some of you were very concerned about they weren't paying their sales tax. So twenty-eight says one, on the name, and a twenty-four hour contact number, twenty-four, twenty-four, seven of the emergency contact and proof of a valid transaction privilege tax. So if you adopt this ordinance, then we have a second read, then it's effective thirty days. I truly think then you need to do a notice to all persons and, and owners in Cave Creek that they need, if they have a short-term rental, to apply.
Bill, I'm having trouble following you. You're twenty-eight, my twenty, I'm not sure, are the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I printed off the web. It's, I apologize. I'll do my section number. Section one twelve point oh five.
Okay.
Page twenty-seven or?
Okay.
And this, this is what's in the application. See, what's good about this, which wasn't before, is it gives you the ability to acquire a license. That, that, then you, you, you will have a database to look at it to make sure this is correct. I'll, I'll go by section numbers. I'm sorry, I didn't know you had.
And how do you know if they don't have a license? How do?
They didn't apply for it. They didn't apply for it.
They didn't apply for it.
And if they don't apply for it in thirty days, it's a thousand dollar fine per month.
But how do we find out that truly they are doing short-term rentals?
That was my comment about enforcement. I think the only way, because I doubt you're gonna have people out driving the streets looking for short-term rentals. I think it's going to be complaint-driven. And then you go to the, to the advertising VRBOs and see, and then you, then you trigger the license.
Thank you.
Now, in, in, in section one twelve oh six, this is the vestige of the Regulatory Bill of Rights. The legislature was very concerned about governments not responding quickly enough. This says you have to issue the license within seven business days. So this is, I mean, Scottsdale has thousands, and so they, this does, and there's no way around this. You have to issue it. But then you go through, and it gives you the kinds of things you want. They're registered sex offender. They provide false information. They've had a revoked license. These are all kinds of things so that you can say to the neighbors who are complaining, you're, 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 you're watching out, you have their back. And if, if, if indeed it's denied, they can't reapply for a year for that short-term rental. That's a pretty big penalty. Because if I, a lot of these people buy these homes spec, and then they want to rent them out. And if they can't rent them out for a year, that, that's, that's a problem. And they may then have to go get a real renter by that. I mean, a year, an annual.
Bill, how hard is it to do number five?
Number five, where are you?
On the?
What section number?
One twelve points or six. And then number five, the owner. I mean, there's a whole list of stuff in there that's. Am I making sense?
Yes. Your question is, how are you gonna police that out?
Yeah.
I don't think you could do it city, town-wide. I think you're gonna do it complaint-driven. If someone has a big party at Super Bowl, they call the marshal, he calls Luke, Luke gets on the web, finds out it's advertising. Later on, it says, if they advertise as prima facie evidence, they're operating a short-term rental. Then you start plowing into them. You don't have an application. And they, they've got to show, I was surprised at this. They, they actually have to show that every one of their occupants, they've looked to see if they're a sex offender. That's, that, that will really be, that's good. I mean, it's good in terms of protecting the public.
If they list.
Pardon?
I don't think that's gonna be real easy.
Yeah. To, to police up. Well, that's why I got it. We're gonna have to do it on a piece, on a, on a claim by claim basis. Here's one, one thing they don't want to do is have someone have a short-term rental and then rent it out for, for wedding receptions. And so it's, it's an easy, it's an easy violation. If they, your code has a special event, he wrote it, that, that requires certain permits if they have a, a number of off-site parking. And so if, if they, the marshal sees tons of cars, then we say you didn't get a special event. That right there is grounds for revocation. And then remember, revocation suspends them for a year. That's a penalty.
What, what is that? I'm lost again.
I apologize. In one twelve, one twelve oh nine.
Okay.
Deep two D as in dog. And we don't. Go to one twelve sixteen. This is an example of protecting the neighbors and protecting, protecting the, the occupant of the short-term rental. In the event of emergency, one twelve sixteen A is an alpha. Any person designated as an emergency contact upon the request shall respond within one hour to the visit, to the physical location for which the, they are the emergency contact. That does two things. Officially, it protects public health and safety. Unofficially, it's a pain. And so that, and that's, the law doesn't bar you from being a pain as long as we have other justifications.
Bill, may I ask you about that? Is, is that something that other towns have done? One hour is not much time. It means that basically you've got to have some, there's the manager within town.
That's what they're trying to do. That's in the statute in the AG West.
Okay, it's in the statute.
Yes, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Insurance requirements. They have to put, your, your license has to be advertised on their, I'm on page, section one twelve eighteen. They have to put your license on their advertising. That's a way of making sure that all these short-term rentals are licensed. One twelve nineteen, one of the problems we had in Jerome was garbage. Here, we, we, they have to, they have to comply. This, and, and there'll be a notice from the short-term owner to the occupant about, about the garbage, garbage retention. This is, if, if they additional help in public, no person owning shall leave trash for, for no, for not more than twelve hours. So if, if, if I'm the owner and I rent it out for Super Bowl, they have a big party, and there's tons of beer cans and bottles, and they leave, and then leave it on the street for more than twelve hours. That's a violation. Now, that isn't one that's triggers, triggers immediate suspension. Go, if you go back to and I'm not quite sure how they came up with this. This is in one twelve oh nine A one. These are the ways that you can suspend. It's three verified violations within a twelve-month period. So if, if indeed they left the garbage out three times, then you can suspend. But they've left out aesthetic, they left out solid waste, so it didn't garbage, and, and vehicle parking. I don't know why they left those out. Those still would be, so what they're saying is, I was wrong. I, I, I didn't. Those still would be, so what they're saying is, I was wrong. I, I didn't realize solid waste was there. Three of these violations in a twelve months is suspension, but that doesn't apply to solid waste, but that would be a violation for which, if they're applying in the future, you could deny the application. So I apologize, I didn't realize solid waste was there. You have to get pest control every two weeks. I don't even do that at my. That's one twelve nineteen F as in fox trot.
Bill, the, the comment, the town manager designate shall initiate suspension proceeds against the short-term. What are those proceeds? Does that go before the judge, or is that something the town can do administratively?
It'll be, right now, it's the hearing officer. Where are you reading, Mr. Mayor? Where are you reading?
That's, Jim, what you just left, one, one twelve dot zero nine A.
Okay. This would go, this would go to where it was, let me go back, I gotta find, that's, that's a different section. Yeah, but I've got to find the administrative proceedings, appeals. Any, I'm now in section one twelve twelve, I think it's thirty-two of yours, maybe. Any person agreed by a decision would be the manager to denial or refusal to issue a short-term rental, may appeal to your hearing officer. So it's administrative. One twelve, one twelve dot twelve A. But they, they give courts the right, go to, this is honestly, I can't say I did this, the legislation is quite good, but it took us, took us twelve years and and I think the league struck a bargain. The, the league got them to agree to this, and the league said there would be a moratorium on additional legislation. So that's, that, that's how we got this. The league agreed that they wouldn't. That doesn't mean you can't. But it means the league has actually given them an agreement that the short-term rental lobby to, to, to get this in so they wouldn't come back with new, with new legislation. I want to find part of that court. You're just really, it's on, it's in one twelve ten. Now, standing all this other stuff, you can go to Superior Court and get, and get, and, and, and get judicial action. And they can, they can suspend for twelve months as well, without jumping through all sorts of hoops.
Who's, who is the hearing officer?
Right.
I don't know who it is.
Mayor, we would have to solicit and hire a hearing officer. We have other sections in the town code that we could send to the hearing officer. We haven't had that in years.
Okay, so there are, there are parallel, there is an administrative relief. Then there is the hearing officer, and then there is the court with an appeal to the Superior Court.
But the beauty of your enforcement mechanism, talking to your marshal, is that he finds the violations and in effect has a dialogue and gets, and gets satisfaction. I can tell you, in some of my other jurisdictions, that's not the case. In my other jurisdictions, they have to balance between a criminal action versus civil action. One of my jurisdictions, we had someone who really wanted to go to jail because he couldn't feed himself. And so he, he would just, he loved going to jail because he got to eat. And so that's why I like what your marshal does. He talks to your, to the people who violated the code and gets them to fix it, so you never get to the hearing officer. This is a good, one twelve twenty-two. Again, this came out of the statute. But again, the goal is, is to get the short-term operator to talk to the neighbors. This requires him or her to talk to the neighbors and, and explain to them everything that's going on. And, and the proceeding page, go back to, yeah, it might be section one twelve nineteen, there's a notice here that has to be published in, 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 in the short-term rental, so that everybody knows the requirements. And so they can complain. And so just honestly, I can't say I could take credit for this. The legislature did a good job on this. And I think that's it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, questions from council.
Do we have any idea how many short-term rentals there are in town? So, yeah. That's a big mountain to climb.
That's why it's complete, it'll be complaint-driven.
Yeah.
Why do you say, why do you keep saying that? I'm not sure I agree with that.
Well, then you're going to need, then you're going to need to hire.
If I could cover the administrative process a little bit, that might clear some things up. So normally, an ordinance would have a thirty-day wait period before it goes into effect. And should this get to a second reading, staff would request a longer period of time so we can complete the administrative process, which is the licensing, the computer system that will be set up to, to do the licensing and, and handle the process. But we also need to identify how we would get initial notifications out to as many of the obvious short-term rentals that we have to find in our jurisdictional boundaries the best we can. I don't know that we can get everyone, but we do need to get the notifications out, send some letters out and attempt to notify everyone that's, that we can, who is currently doing a short-term rental within the town boundaries. That's the more difficult, and a lot of them just have cave creek addresses and don't always have the exact address. So we need to work with that. We need to do some notifications, some education, newspapers, you know, articles, things like that, to get that word out that this is going into effect on whatever day the council sets.
So you, you plan to have a robust database of short-term rentals in the townlands. Is that correct?
The, the best we can do, because it's not that obvious. There are ways to get as many of, of them through the, when they operate through the main Airbnbs and Verbo and that it's easier to get. If somebody is just out on their own renting it out, it's a little more difficult to find them.
Yeah.
But we do need to get the, the notification out that we have licensing requirement so that we can, and, and then the rest, some of it will be complaint-driven and we get lots of those, so.
Yeah, we get lots of complaints about the VRBOs and the ones that are on the websites. I have, I've never heard of any that are just someone renting their casita out or something.
This is where you're right. You get to make the call about complaint-driven. All my point is, if you're going to start this, that's where I would start. And that would identify the problem, problem, short-term rentals. And if that gives you a template to be able to identify a larger set, you can do it, you can do it less, you could go on the advertising campaign that the manager's talking about. But I think initially, it probably will be complaint-driven to, to, to address problems that you have. But this, this code can be enforced however you like it. You can do whatever you want, but I, but I don't know if you have manpower or person power to go and identify all of them. But I like what the council of Rhodes, it's, I think you get VRBO, and I think you could type in the jurisdiction, and I think you get a list. I think you might be able to get a list, and that could be a place to start.
You do it as a geo-search. So you identify the corner coordinates of the town. And then it should be able to tell you anybody that's, that's done that. The, the issue that I, that I'm wrestling with, we want people to do this, right? We want people to, we want to encourage people.
Yes.
We just want to make sure that we get the, the revenue from the sales tax and, and from the short-term rental tax. I think we need to be careful about how punitive we want to get on this, because there's kind of a balance. You know, it's like the learner curve or the Laffer curve, right? You, you want to drive it to a certain point, but you don't want to make it punitive on people either. So I, I think we need to think through really. I'd like to see the administrative procedures finalized before we have a second reading on this. Because I want to make sure that we're not punishing people for doing the right thing.
Very good point. In fact, this code provision has, says just that. It says you can, once we get to the enforcement mechanism, you can waive whatever, you, you have the power to waive anything. So this does give you, but the, the one benefit of at the front end, identifying the penalty is to get their attention, so they do apply. And then, then, then I think over time, you don't necessarily have to enforce that.
No, I understand, but like pest control every two weeks. I mean, come on, that's, I mean, I wouldn't inflict that on my worst enemy.
Other questions from council? It's not your turn yet. We'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll have public comment. Will you be able to, to come in and talk about it? Right now, we're at the council level. So we're going to get all our questions in, and then we're going to open it up to the public. And you can, have you turned the slip in? Okay. Council, other questions from council?
I guess I would just concur with council member Rhodes. I, I find this all to be very onerous. And, you know, we, we pride ourselves in this community for respecting private property rights. And I wonder how we will defend that if, if this gets into effect. I, I, I see the need, because people have abused it, but I'm also very cautious about taking it too far. And so I think that there's a, a fine line, and that we need to balance how to fix a problem that doesn't seem to be that great in this community. I know a few people have complained. I know some people really want this to go through. But I think that it deserves quite a bit of study before we move forward.
Do we anticipate that the owners of short-term rentals would be well notified before penalties are applied? In other words, would we go in and just apply the penalty? We go in, and there's a discussion that takes place.
Yes, sir.
So that the owner knows that there's a problem.
Yes, sir. Madam Vice Mayor, one option would be, because it is in your interest to get the sales tax flowing, is, is to implement the licensing requirements and then hold an abeyance to the extent you, you as a council wish to be less rigorous, is hold an abeyance, the, 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 the more stringent penalties. But one, one thing would be is to, is to get, is to get everybody, get them all to get a short, get the transaction privilege tax.
So there's really two things you want in the short term. You want the licenses, right? You want people to make sure they're, they're licensed.
Yes.
And then the second thing you want is the sales tax revenue from it, correct? The other things, I'd like to see the administrative procedures before we implement that. I mean, I, I'm not opposed to, you know, being punitive if you have to, but that's kind of a last resort, not the, I mean.
Explain how the administrative procedures are going to affect.
Well, the administrative procedures tell you how you're going to, how are you going to do your enforcement? So when, when the town manager said, you know, we're still working on the, the actual procedures, the procedural manual, whatever that's going to be, or whatever your standard operating procedure or whatever, that will tell you how it's going to be enforced. One of the things that this could lend itself to without well-written procedures is you can pick on one guy because you don't like him. So how do you make sure that it's applied equitably across the board? Those are the kind of administrative procedures that need to be laid out.
Well.
Mr. Mayor, council member, I believe the, the process is relatively simple. It's very similar to our business license. It would be an application process online. We're looking to have sort of a database or computer software program that they're applying. And they're providing all the documentation right up front with the application and the fee. So when you apply for the, the license, you're submitting a copy of your transaction privilege license document. You already have, you get that first. They should, they should have that. You're applying for, if you don't already have on a business license, so we would have a link to that. They would be providing that, a copy of the notification, what is going out to the, their neighbors. That's, that's required in the regulations, and they're, they're required to have insurance. So their certificate of insurance, it's just like a, an application, and all those documents come. They would be put into our computer system, and they'd be issued the license as long as they, they pay the fee. It's good for one year, and then they're in compliance. And then it's based on some kind of complaint. They rented out, and one of our biggest complaints is the noise. They've got their information on file. If someone is complaining and it goes to the marshal, we have the information to actually call somebody and say, we're getting complaints from your people, and it could be handled right there. The issue could be.
You're, you're talking about the transaction, just the paperwork.
Yeah, that's all it is.
After that, it becomes.
And then they have a license, they can operate, right? And as long as there's no complaints, there's no noise, there's whatever the issue is. You know, setting off fireworks and things like that. If someone complains, we will now have a contact of the property owner, which we don't have now. And they're supposed to be available, so we can make a phone call. And hopefully, that will be the shortest, quickest remedy to the majority of the problems.
Yeah, I, I just think there are some things in here, like the, the, every two weeks with the.
That, I don't know how we would handle that, honestly. That, I mean, they're not going to submit a receipt that they paid for that. I really don't know how we would follow that. And, but everything else that we've gone through, I think we can handle all of the documentation right up front.
Well, and, and if, if there are specific things in here that people aren't comfortable, I'm, I'm, I join you in the the pest control. I've never done pest control at my house, and I have no roaches. I have a lot of scorpions, but I think they can correlate. But I, I agree with you. There's some hygienic things in here that we might want to eliminate between this reading and the second reading. And I, I think when we get to that point, we ought to make a motion to do so, then we can vote on it, and it goes into here. And the next, we'll come back to what you'd like to see.
Mr. Mayor, the councilman wrote, is the point about it being overbearing, when I started the conversation by saying it's complaint-based, who have written this, would only be overbearing to those who refuse to comply. Do you follow me? Who refuse to get the license, who refuse to post the emergency contact, who refuse to go see the neighbors. All I'm saying is, for those who comply, this is, this is neutral. You never, you never get to, to, to an enforcement mechanism. And, and, but, and if you only identify those by, by complaint, by being complaint-based, it's the worst two-year. But that, that, that's where the two, if we decide not to be complaint-based, I agree with you totally. This is probably what we're doing. And so we've got to decide how you're.
I just think we ought to take a look
Okay.
Some of the, some of the enforcement pieces.
Okay.
If we're going to, you know, I, I do understand the needs for the, the sales tax. I do under, I mean, it's not fair to other businesses. There, somebody's making money and they're not paying their sales tax. I get that. But I do think it, it, some of these things are a bit onerous. And I, I do understand the escalation piece, but I, I think there's two or three simple things that really provide that, that, that issue. You don't comply with the already existing town ordinances. We already have the right to shut that down, that business down, right? I mean, that's what we do with commercial businesses. So let's not make it more onerous than, than any other commercial business in the town.
And I'd like to hear just a little bit more. Bill, you, you kind of implied that we could sequence the implementation. Does that make sense? Or maybe that's what Carrie said.
No, no, I said it is, if, if, the reason I was comfortable being overbearing is that I was just letting, having this be complaint-based. So the only persons to, that would be overburdened, if that's the word, would be those who violated it. And so I wasn't troubled about, but if, but if you're now going to go to canvassing the neighborhoods and finding out who has, that, that this is overbearing, I agree with you totally. So you have to decide that. So what I was saying is, if you're going to wait on the overbearing side of this, one option would be to get what we need, what you need, and that is the sales tax, business license, and transaction privilege tax, and, and get that in rapidly, because that generates revenue and is required by state statute and the AG blessed it. Then we leave to a later day to what extent the procedures are in place. Because I do think, I do think if this only is complaint-based, I'm not sure being overbearing is bad. Because we're only being overbearing to those who, who are thumbing their nose at you. And so, but if you want to, if you want to be not complaint-based, and if you want to have the marshal out looking for, for short-term rentals, then this is overbearing. I agree with you.
Well, but one of the concerns, you know, when we get to the overbearing piece, one of the concerns I've got is if you have a snotty neighbor that's kind of can be happy with anything, this could be a problematic issue.
I didn't think, you're right, they're complaint-based could be for a snotty neighbor.
I mean, Lord knows, nobody in this room has ever had a snotty neighbor.
Councilmember Bunch. Mr. Councilman, desert rural special event permit, how many of those do we do? And we, and we don't, and when we do those, we don't allow them to exceed the noise levels or anything else that, what, what, what is a special event in a desert rural neighborhood?
Mayor Morris, Councilman Bunch, there aren't any that I can instantly recall ever being issued, especially.
Just one. With a wedding on a large property.
Yeah, and generally, you know, it's, it's not too uncommon for property owners to host a wedding reception for their children or grandchildren on their property here in Cave Creek. That's not something that we've ever sought out to enforce and get our pound of flesh from. It's the, the properties that would want to use their rental property specifically for that type of, of thing, which is why this is in this document here. Just to police that up a little bit using Bill's words.
So, so really, I guess, I guess what I'm seeing here is, is this is something that if everybody behaved, we wouldn't actually need to do this.
It'd be a break.
This is for the party houses that, and, and the, and the super loud noise things that happen. It seemed like an awful lot to put people through to get there, but I understand the need for it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could answer that question, I have one jurisdiction. You're right. If, if you have a residence and you want to have a wedding and a reception, that's not a short-term rental. This doesn't apply. But if you have an owner who markets a residence as a marriage venue, which I had in one of my jurisdictions, it was terrible. And that, 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 that's the special event that this would, this was categorically would be, would, would allow for suspension.
Why can't we just change the wording to say, you know, house that, that conducts special events on a routine basis is just.
That's what's in there now. That, 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 what they're now, that's what it says. By referring, by referring, in fact, when I came here, I didn't know I was going to make the presentation. Luke says, Bill, you got this one. I came, I came early because I wanted, I wanted to ask what that, what that, what the special event was, 2014, we looked at. You, you told us at the beginning.
I did. Completely transparent, Bill. I don't appreciate.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. When a complaint is registered, is it public record? Who made the complaint?
Yes.
So that would the offending property owner then know which neighbor has complained?
That's a good, there, there, now, you know, I like, you're worried about, very good point. If indeed we're worrying about deterring the issuance of complaints, I think I can figure out an exception to that. I, I see your point, Councilmember. I see your point. But, but once, once it's done, I do think the complaint would be a public record.
And would the person then making the complaint be, be public record?
Yeah, wait, during penalty, you don't make a public record.
All of our complaints that come in, we don't disclose the complaint in until the case is closed. Well, it's an active case.
Doesn't that violate due process? I mean, are you supposed to know your accusers?
Yeah, well, well, it's an open investigation. One, once it's closed.
This point is if they're looking into it, it wouldn't be, but, but if we're now going to impose a penalty, they would be advised.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions from council? Okay, there's public comment on this.
Laura G. Good evening, Laura G. with beautiful Cave Creek, Arizona. I had prepared some wonderful remarks on agenda, item two of the resolution and on three, the ordinance, but we seem to have slid past that. So if you would bear with me, I have to wing it a bit here. I have to say I'm a bit appalled with Mr. Sims' remarks where he seems to have, shall we say, a hate on for property owners and rental property owners. I thought the issue here was dealing with noisy nuisance party houses. So I had to make some noise. We need to talk about noise, not, not properties and rental properties. And by the way, it's my understanding that many of our casitas or rental properties are currently paying sales tax. I don't feel the need to go on a witch hunt. There, of course, there's some exceptions. And I did look at the ads for the next several months, properties that are offered for rental in Cave Creek. We're, we're not talking thousands of properties. We're talking tens of properties. Are there others for sale that may come on? I don't know. We're not, I read this ordinance and I just can't think that this is the Cave Creek way of doing things. It seems to be a New York solution to a Cave Creek problem. I spent the entire beautiful weekend reading this 13 pages over and over to try to read and understand every word. It's a way, it's not easy. I would have rather been out in the sunshine hiking or at the car show. But I was going through this, trying to find out how this applies to nuisance party houses. Very little of it does. I don't understand why we want to hamstring our property owners and ruin their dreams or maybe their financial needs or what have you. And then I'm hearing some things that are misstated, or maybe I misunderstand. I went back, I tried to look at the background documents, the source documents. No wonder I couldn't find them. We're not Sedona, we're not Fountain Hills, we're not Scottsdale, we're Cave Creek. And if we're going to look at nuisance party houses, we need to do something tailored for Cave Creek and that specific problem. I looked back at Senate Bill 1168, that, those are guidelines. It's not a mandate. We do not have to do everything. The state is trying to give the cities some allowance to do what's right for themselves locally. And even on this little matter here about the time of one hour for the owner's representative to be on site if there's an emergency or the owner's rep. My understanding is that's not what the statute says. It says that the owner or owner's rep has to respond in a reasonable time period, in a reasonable amount of time, which could be a phone call, which is fair. And I would like to see Cave Creek come up with something that's fair, that people can understand. I've read a lot of legislation. It took me two days to read this thing and try to understand it. It doesn't have definitions. It doesn't have focus. And I don't know why we want to pick on our neighbors and fellow creakers and make things difficult. As Ms. Royer said, this could be handled very simply. Now, this morning, I sent each of you an email detailing some, my concerns of certain language in this proposal that are going to be hangups. And if you want people to comply, it doesn't need to be full of hangups. Or what was the terminology I heard? Something to do with hitting people over the head. This is not the way to make good legislation. And I also sent each of you an email with some thoughts of how we can approach this better. It doesn't have to be, let's have a business license, let's have registration, let's have a sheriff, you know, spending a lot of city staff time on this. And as for the sheriff, as a person who, I'd be the person calling if there's a noisy neighbor down the street. And as I pointed out in the emails, the way this is written, the sheriff is not able to, my understanding, actually deal with the problem at the time. You know, at two in the morning, he has to go back later with a sound meter, et cetera, et cetera. We need to look at our existing ordinances, see what needs to be tweaked and help people. These people that are using our rentals, they're not felons, they're not sex offenders. They come to town, they're antiquing, they're going to the car shows, they're, they're geologists, they're artists, they're people that you want to visit your community to enjoy Cave Creek and to enjoy the desert. And the people who are renting out their properties, they're not felons, they're not sex offenders, as it says in this application. They're widows, they're widowers who need the money, they're mom and pop retirees, they're young families who are, need, need to have an investment for their children, college fund, what have you. So I, what I would like to see is for Cave Creek to set this dream killer ordinance aside, this complicated, impossible to comply with ordinance. Get a group together of interested parties, people who own rentals, people who are neighbors. Get those people who have complained in the past, get them on a panel, I'll call it the party panel, with the city staff, let's work out something that works for our unique town. Let's work out some, something that works for, for Cave Creek. We don't want to kill dreams. This, I'm sorry, is a bad ordinance. The language is terrible. We can do much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Haddock.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff. This short-term rental proposal is aggressively punitive and cast far too large an entrapment net. It punishes every short-term housing provider with new taxes and additional nuisance regulations. This overreach is entirely predicated on the possible wrongdoing of those who contact, contract to rent party houses. However, party houses is not mentioned once in the body of the sweeping proposal, not once. Why is that? Mom and pop casino providers should not be required to screen for sex offenders or have to worry about the repercussion of doing so. Nor should they be required to verify pest control treatment no less than every two weeks? What kind of infestations does this town have that I don't know about? This is nuts. And, and if, and if they don't, if they can't provide that, this thing says they face an arbitrary high fine and, and loss of, of license to operate. This, this isn't Cave Creek. Who put this thing together? This is garbage. The language of this proposal is a direct attack on everybody's freedoms and liberties. Most paramount of all is a direct attack on our property rights, adding to the war against the private sector. As written, this proposal is beyond the state of repair. It is unfair, punitive, arbitrary, trash legislation, treated as such. Please don't do what seems easiest. Do what's right and best for Cave Creek. Deep six, these 13 pages of muddled mess. The Airbnb and VRBO platforms have restricted the rental of homes by persons 25 years of age and younger. These actions have produced a 44% decrease in party house problems. If you find that Cave Creek has the data, which it sounds like it sure as hell doesn't, to support any new rate, regulation, direct those corrections in the party house problem, not the entire short-term rental industry. Take a cue from Airbnb and VRBO, focus on the target problem, not our good citizens. Also exempt casitas, motel rooms, RV spots and all other spaces that are far too small to ever be a party house problem. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. We need this housing for our guests and tourists that support our Cave Creek merchants. Do you really want the enforcement nightmare this proposal brings? Don't needlessly punish good citizens for having done nothing wrong. Those using the Airbnb and VRBO platforms automatically pay their sales tax. I think they deduct somewhere in the neighborhood of, can I cover this up? 15% of their gross proceeds. What comes next after this kind of stuff is taxing them on their gross income. And I think you folks are smart enough to realize where that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Ryder. Good evening. Sorry for interrupting before. This is my first council meeting. My name is Jess. I've lived in Cave Creek since I was born. My family moved out here in the 1960s. When my mom passed away, my brother and I inherited her home, which we now have as a short-term rental, along with our own private area to go back and visit weekly, daily. I was there earlier today. With this piece of legislative, legislation, I do have some concerns. Some of the verbiage in there is unclear and I don't think pertains to our small town. Similar to the two people have, that have spoken before me, things in here such as the events. We've held five weddings at our house, including my brother's. I had a wedding last spring because a woman's grandmother got ill and they had to cancel the venue. So they used our short-term rental for their small ceremony with 25 of their family members. We have good relationships with our neighbors. We have Nancy. We tell her every single time we have a big event. We have a neighbor that's a half a mile away that per this legislation, I would have to notify them of my short-term rental, even though they couldn't even hear if we're blaring music at our house anyways. We have other neighbors that aren't across the street, but across the wash, that have complained to us because they've left the lights on after the rentals, which I then drive over there at 10 o'clock at night to turn them off. This legislation focuses on, doesn't focus on small families, small businesses. Are you going to be waking me up at 1:00 in the morning because there is a police officer at our door? Personally, I would want to be woken up at 1:00 in the morning if someone is throwing a huge kegger at our house. But in this legislation, fining me thousands of dollars because I didn't pick up my cell phone because there is an issue, I would look to our law enforcement to resolve that issue in that moment, just as if it was my own residence that was living in the middle of the night for them to come out and tell me to turn my music down. So please, when you're looking at this and looking at this verbiage, this isn't big company. We are individuals. We love Cave Creek and think about this ordinance and how it's going to affect the individual person versus everyone. Thank you.
Thanks.
Chantel Hujet.
I apologize. I have not read the legislation fully. I will gladly go home and do that this evening. I'm sure it's riveting. So I have, I've just picked up on the comments and the commentary and, and discussion that's been happening so far. I apologize for my crude notes that I've written here on my phone. I, I don't have an Airbnb. I really don't have a dog in the fight. But having said that, I would be really concerned as a resident of Cave Creek that there would be a double standard for me as a resident versus the people who own these short-term rentals, right down to the two weeks for pest control. I, I would like to think that hopefully that would be something that could be waived, as he did mention, that things could be waived and different provisions could be changed. Having said that, I would also think that waiving certain punitive measures for some people and not others could be seen as discriminatory or retaliatory. I would also worry that consistency and not being consistent and that potential for a lack of consistency could potentially be a liability for the town. I, I would be really curious to know as to what Scottsdale and Fountain Hills and the other municipalities have, have had as far as any claims or lawsuits that may become as a result of this. In regards to what Mr. Rhodes had said regarding commercial venues, also leasing out rooms and hotels and everything. I, I don't know that the Marriott's or anything like that have to ever check if there's a registered sex offender staying at their location. That does seem really excessive to put that on Airbnb and Verbo owners. Neighbor retaliation, I think, could also become a problem, and I don't think there's any shortness of that in this town. Neighbor disputes and retaliation and things. And lastly, Mr. Stein obviously is, is one person, right? He has MCSO that's meant to enforce the laws of this town as well as Maricopa County. I can speak from personal experience that MCSO does not adequately enforce rules and laws, both local and Maricopa County laws regarding noise complaints. It seems like if there is a party house and there is a noise complaint, that MCSO should be able to handle that on the spot. So in order to have that done, that seems like a much easier remedy than having to take the successive measures and enforce all of these rules that could potentially be detrimental to small business owners and private homeowners in the community. Just food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Moore.
Hi. I have been a short-term rental owner since like 2017. I, I, as I, as you know from before, I have rental properties and I started turning them into short-term rentals. I found that, number one, I took care of them better. When you have a long-term person in there, sometimes they do damages and then you're not in there for years and really to be able to fix it up. So I really found that it was a better way for me to be able to take care of my properties and I really enjoy it. People are in a good mood, they're vacationing. I take it very seriously. I also appreciate the fact that you're going to be getting licensed. When I opened my first one or started my first one in the town, I called and I found out, to find out what I had to do, because I know in the other municipalities, I needed a license. And I was told, no, don't need that. Great, you know. But I think it's, as any kind of a business owner, I see that it probably is sensible to have a license. Number two, being a business person and knowing how the town runs and sitting in this room for many. Number two, being a business person and knowing how the town runs and sitting in this room for many, many years, you guys need to collect money to run the town. So I do feel that you need to collect the taxes and make sure that you're getting them. I think that's good business sense and I'm really sorry for anybody that doesn't think so, but that's just the way it is. I'd rather not pay taxes, but I know that we need to pay for our fire service and things like that. So it needs to be paid. On all of my properties, I have it stated, no events, no parties. If you want to allow parties, that's your business. Personally, for me, I find it better to not have to worry. I don't want no fireworks. There's absolutely no fireworks allowed. I want it quiet. My one in Cave Creek, I have it specifically stated, this is a quiet house. You, you need to respect the neighbors. And the people I've had there, I just had somebody leave after forty-five days, an older woman by herself. She, she loved it. She would take walks. She would go into town as my other people that have stayed there. So I think there's a smart way of doing this and, and to me, I always want to respect my neighbors. So even no matter what town it's in, those are my rules. My, they stay rented. They don't get damaged. And I also, in reading your ordinance, I do think that there's some things that can be tweaked. I would be happy to be a sounding board to all of you, since I've had a company like this for a long time. And I do think you need to define what a short-term rental is for sure. There's no definitions in that. And short-term rentals should be defined in there. Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, it's time for council comments.
You need a motion first.
Oh, excuse me, we sure do. I'm looking for a motion then.
Mayor, I'll do it. Number two, right, motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero-two resolution, the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, declaring as a public record a certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled short-term rental, public health and safety protections.
Is there a second?
So can we second with a caveat?
Sure. No. Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. You can still be opposed.
I'd like, like to amend this so that we get two or three people from the community who are short-term rental owners to provide input to make this before it comes back to us for a second reading.
Say that again.
I would like to see, I would like to see this amended so that we get some short, maybe three short-term property rental owners, maybe Ms. Moore and a couple of the others to come in and help tweak this to make sure we're not being punitive.
Well, that, I'm not sure that's actionable.
Would it be appropriate for me to make a statement at this point in time?
Second, then you have a discussion and during the course of that discussion, you could amend the motion.
Yeah, well, well, first of all, th- this.
Let me, let me clarify the process. Dusty, you've got to, you've got to turn this into a motion and a, a motion that, that is applicable to the motion that Ernie had and the way, and then you need a second for your motion. We vote on that and we, then we go back. So if you want to amend what he has, then make that into a motion.
I would make a motion to amend that we find three people who are short-term property owners in Cave Creek to assist in tweaking this potential ordinance to make sure it's not punitive for the property owners.
Second.
This ordinance is actually agenda item number three. What we're doing now is actually making a public, making this a public record for what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, that, that's.
I'll wait until, if we can add that to the next one.
Okay, so we had a motion and you've withdrawn your.
I withdrawn second.
Is there a second to Ernie's?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion. Okay, so you have the emotion.
Yeah, thi- this is, is basically just, just making public what we're actually looking at. The next agenda item actually is, is what requires two reads. And there will be ample time in between the first and, and second read to, to go along with what Councilman Rhodes is discussing and, and everybody else is looking at. So at this point, I think that, from, from my perspective, the, the thing to do is to go ahead and just approve the document or don't approve it, in which case we don't move on to agenda item number three.
Well, I'm not sure I agree. It says here that, that we can approve this as a first reading.
Item number two.
Item number two is the resolution that adopts this as public record. And then item number three requires two readings. There'll be a first and a second, in which case that's in that time between a first and second reading, as Councilman Bunch pointed out, is when you could have dialogue with stakeholders such as short-term rental operators currently in the town and that, and that kind of thing and bring those comments to you.
So help me with the second reading. Here now, we have a motion to.
This is the resolution that declares it a public record.
Okay, we're, all we're doing is declaring public record. Okay, so the motion then to declare a public record is all we're voting on or commenting on. And so you had, thank you. Appreciate that. Your experience is showing.
I've been here a while.
Mine is too.
Look, it's a voice vote.
We rate your comments. Any comments on this or not? All, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It is notified. Okay, so now we're on to the agenda item. Three. Council discussion approval of first reading ordinance oh two zero two-three dash zero-two in ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, adding chapter one-one-two of title eleven entitled short-term rental, public health and safety protections to the town of Cave Creek Town Code, establishing an effective date providing for a repeal and severability and declared to be a public record by resolution number R two zero two-three dash zero-two. Luke, take it.
Mayor, members of council. So for this, this is as stated, two readings. So what you would be considering tonight is giving this first reading, allowing staff to then work out some of the tweaks that have been both mentioned by the, by the public and yourselves. Reach out to some of the short-term rental operators that we know are out there, some behind us. And bring back and report to you at such time. So we've noted, I've made note of those, those things. Also, something that the town manager spoke of, which would be a delayed effectiveness from second reading till we actually roll it out. I think we talked about a sixty-day or a ninety-day. That gives us even more time to notify the operators, notify the general public of, of these changes as well. So this is something that between first and second reading can take really as, as long as we need to get it done right. And that's what I would offer to mayor and council and Mr. Sims can, can fill in any holes or rush anything that I've missed.
So this is actually a public hearing for number three. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is an ordinance. So you would, you would be taking your public hearing for this, for this first reading, yes.
Okay. So we're going to need a motion, comments and questions on this one too. So first of all, any further questions on this? I'm looking for a motion to.
Mayor, public hearing first.
Excuse me, I opened the public hearing on this and.
Laura G.
Comments? Just one, before we start again, I just want to mention, when the red light goes off, the three minutes is up. If you would finish your statement and, and complete, I didn't, I forgot to do, to tell everybody what the program was in the first round. But if you'd limit your comments to three minutes plus whatever little finishing your paragraph, I'd appreciate it.
And you have a warning.
Yeah, the yellow's a warning and then the, the red is time's coming. As long as it's green, talk away. So Laura.
Thank you. Of course, I forgot several things the first time. Number one, I meant to thank all of you on council and staff for being here. We appreciate it. I know you have to hear a lot. It's a lot to go through, so thank you. And I'll say that people who aren't here, I know there are casino operators who are not here because they read the ordinance, ordinance and they're, they're scared. They're afraid. They feel cowed by this language. And several have told me, if this goes through, I am dropping out of the business. I'm going to put office files in my casino. I don't care. I don't need this grief. That's not what we want, right? That's not what we want in Cave Creek. And then I also want to reiterate, I, I hear the council is, is leaning toward, all right, let's have business licenses, et cetera. Again, I think the original problem was dealing with noise complaints and several people said the calls that come in, I don't get them, have to do with noise. Let's remember that. It's, yeah, sales tax is great. But I want a peaceful town to live in where people get along. I, I think that's about what I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Haddock.
Well, I'm very saddened you didn't just deep six this thing. It's such bad legislation. Let me tell you, I've been Cave Creek for a year. I love it here. I love the folks. And I left my lifelong state of the communist coast, California, for good reason. I rented properties for over forty years, bought my first house when I was nineteen years old. So I'm very familiar with the business, more familiar than most. And I've also lived the experience when these kinds of legislations creep into our freedom. Let me tell you, I've lived it. I've seen it. When I tell people what transpires and how it goes step by step, they don't believe me because it's just too aggressive. It's unbelievable. You wouldn't think it'd happen in your lifetime. Let me tell you, when you start letting stuff like this come in, all the socialists are going to be filling this room up. You're going to be looking for more chairs in a bigger room. They come in with their choreographed programs and you don't know what hit you. And there goes Cave Creek. I'd like to see Cave Creek stay the way it is. You pass something like this, you're in deep trouble, very deep trouble. The next thing you're going to find is tenants cannot be evicted for not paying rent. And on top of that, you can't get them out. Even when their rental agreement is expired, you cannot get them out. You have to pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them out. That's what you want in Cave Creek. Have at it because that's what comes next. I, I've lived it. Believe me, if you want to know more, more than happy to share the ugliness with you. Thank you.
No additional speakers.
I guess I can close the hearing now. So you have the comments and it's back to council. So I think we've explored the, with the, with the comments. So I'm looking for a motion here.
I'll do the sacrificial lamb again if you want.
Okay, this is a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance zero-two-zero, or is that oh two zero two-three dash oh-two, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code by adding chapter one-twelve of title nine entitled short-term rental, public health and safety protections.
Second. Okay, so we, are there any more, any comments? And I guess we're at the point now where we comment on this.
I, I would like to see if we can amend this to ensure that the property owners can come in and talk and have their, their concerns addressed. I think it is kind of punitive and I don't think we want a punitive legislation or ordinance. I think we want people that. There were two things that I think were, were kind of conflating here. The first is the revenues from, from the business license and sales tax. That's one. That's a separate issue. That's one of the issues we're addressing here. The second issue is the party houses. And I, I think those are two separable things. I think this needs to address just the business license and the sales tax that comes with it. I mean, Cave Creek should get sales tax, just like if you go down to, to the bar and.
We're looking for a motion.
Yeah, so I'm, what I'm saying is, I would like to make a motion.
To amend the motion.
To amend the motion as it exists to ensure that we have the, we have three to five property owners come in and help us make this better for the licensing piece.
Is there a second?
Is that an administrative function?
It is to me, but he's, he's got a motion. So.
Second.
Okay, discussion, discussion on this.
I have discussion. I think it would be beneficial to have both sides of this issue present on this task force. In other words, not only the business owners who want to preserve their rights as property owners, but also neighbors who have been affected by party houses and who feel strongly that, that this legislation is needed. I think we have to have candid conversation between those two parties and get to a point that they're both agreed upon the, the, the conclusion. So I think it's important to get John Hepner in here, who really had some issues in his neighborhood and who feels strongly that we need a policy like this. And I think he needs to be face-to-face with the people who rent their properties who disagree. That's my suggestion.
Other comments, sir?
So just so I understand the process here.
Now, we, we are just talking about the administrative piece.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. But what I'm interested in is, so we're going to work, we're going to try to work on this proposal, this.
We're right now, that, that's for later. This is the, only the administrative piece of three to five.
That's what I want to talk about. So the next time we see this for a second reading, those adjustments that we expect will take place in conversation will have.
After we deal with this administrative part, then we'll get back to the issue that's on the table and we will be able to give directions to staff and what we like to see. So right now, we're just in the never, never land before we can down to making changes. Councilmember.
Mr. Chairman, I'll wait then until this motion's voted on because I wanted to talk about the larger issue. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire.
I think we should not lose fact, lose sight that this is an administrative function. When we're telling our administration how they have to handle it, that worries me. I think we can incorporate these ideas and they should be incorporated. But to tell the administration exactly how to do it is probably not a good idea.
Well, I, I have comments. I mean, this, number one, this is a public hearing. We've got people here. We can get more people between now and the next one. So I just see no reason to, we can talk to people. We can call people, have them at the next meeting. We've got two meetings to get this stuff done administratively. Frankly, it's, it's wasting our time. I think we, we can make changes to this once we get past and make, have those in your motion. We can make the changes that will bring this back, something that the council can prove. I don't think we're, we've reached a point where we really understand what the council wants on this. We have heard from, I have heard from enough property owners. So I understand. Maybe there's some others out there, but I think Vice Mayor Wright had a good point. There are people in town who have extremely strong feelings the other side. They're the ones that haven't spoken here tonight and the ones that we get the call for. So let's have, with that, we'll vote on this. So all those in favor of the motion to get three to five people to comment on this, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alkema.
Hi.
Councilmember McGuire.
No.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Ogerton.
No.
Councilmember Bunch.
No.
Mayor Morris.
No. Motion fails three to four. And so now we're back to the main question, which we had a motion and we had a second. So you had the motion.
Actually, Tom.
Oh, Tom. I'm sorry, no, who did?
McGuire, McGuire.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The balls in my court for better.
There you go.
So I'll, I'll make my comments. I think this, this can be amended. Councilman Rhodes, you made a good point of the two-week pest control. I don't do that at my house. That does seem a little bit onerous. I think that we need to specify what the infractions would be. If we don't say what the infractions are going to be, then we can't enforce them. So we do need to be quite specific. I note that this is only upon complaints. I think that if you've got some neighbor that is unrealistic or difficult, I think staff can probably figure out what to do with that. I think as the mayor has said, we need to have people in who have had particular problems. If it's a problem that's not listed here. If it's a problem that's not listed here, we can't really deal with it. I'd also like to know, th- these are businesses. So I I think that we had their businesses within a residential neighborhood. But as businesses, we really need to know who they are. And I think a business, a small business tax. Carrie, how much is the license? The business license.
Mayor, councilmember, business license is separate from this process.
Okay.
The business license is fifty dollars annually. This is a different process in addition to business license.
Okay, so I I think we we really need to know who is doing the rentals. And I I think this can be handled by the administration. I just don't want to see us. Completely throwing out the baby with the bathwater. We do need some speci- some specifics. Thank you.
Councilmember Bunch, are you in a second?
Yeah, this is a way beyond, in my mind, way beyond what Cave Creek is. And there's way, there's going to be a place in the middle that actually fits and and works for everybody. There's there are. Any anything, I mean, let's face it, for fifteen years, this 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 has been a free ride for everybody. So now we're going to put some regulations on something finally that that. And 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 a little bit of control, not that I want to control your lives or your business. But you are, as as Tom said, operating a commercial business in a residential and desert rural area. I think there'll be plenty of time in the next, between the next meeting or the meeting after, the meeting after, whenever, whenever everything gets gets ironed out. We get a chance to to make it where it actually fits Cave Creek and doesn't look like we're Nazis. So. Yeah, I'm going to support it at this point in time. Hopefully, next time we see it, it'll be something that's more palatable to everybody. I've always believed. If neither side is happy, you've done a good job.
No, I just think we need to make sure that that I I think we're conflating two different things here and I I agree with with Vice Mayor Roy. That we need to get people from both sides in to discuss.
Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor. This is actually, I hate to be the historian, this is actually not a new issue. Cave Creek has been working with visitors for years. It's called bed and breakfast. We issue permits. It was controversial at first. I don't know how many we currently have and it's not really a status report, I guess, this evening, but is there a rough idea of how many beds and breakfasts we have here in town?
Operating under a special use, I believe there are three.
Okay, so the concept is not alien to the town. And then in addition, in the earlier days of the town, we support cottage industries. So there's not necessarily opposition to the concept of doing this, but. If you stay at the tumbleweed, when it used to be a hotel, you paid the tax that was put on the room. If you stay at another location in town, you would pay the tax that's on the room. So I don't know why, I guess I'm surprised there's this level of activity. With non hotel rentals in residential areas in the community. That are off the books entirely because we don't have licensing. So the licensing, does that not make sense, Mr. Mayor? You're frowning.
Well, no, I'm not frowning. That's my natural look.
I mean, the testimony seemed to be kind of interesting because I was not aware that we had that much rental activity. I understand about the Airbnb and all the new concepts and so forth, but I didn't know that we had casita rental. It's just so funny because in the early days, the staff recommended and earlier councils opposed even kitchens being allowed in casitas. Which was thought to be overly punitive. And you probably go back almost to that far. And Joan Dodd, who was on the PNC and the council at the time, who I might have been related to as my mother in law. She raised holy hell because she thought that it was unfair to have. A casita as a function to the house that would be allowed to have that out of fear that it would become a rental. But as as it pertains to this issue, I think the licensing is important. I think the sales tax on the bed for a visitor overnight makes sense. And something can be proportionately designed between the staff and. The council and others and looking at other communities around the state. This is not rocket science. I think it should should proceed. So thank you.
Alkma. Comments?
I'm sure. Actually, I I guess what I'm struggling with is. One of one of this council's sort of baseline conversations. Was all around the idea of communicating better with the people here in town. And so this presents that opportunity for an interest group to really have a conversation with us. So I think I'm going to support this. Because we have one more opportunity if that communication piece isn't met. When it comes back for the final reading. So. Was I clear?
Yes.
Yes. All right, well.
You've done it.
I'm not frowning at you. Is everyone had comments now?
I don't, I I have just, the last thing I, and I do support everything that Mr. Alkma just said because. I I think that is who we are in this town. We are all about sitting around a table and conversing and hammering things out. Or at least we want to get closer to that. I am not an advocate of making decisions in isolation. And I am not an expert on this and I would like to hear from the people who do own rental, short term rental properties. And and the opposite, those who are opposed to them potentially. So it's unfortunate, I think, that 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 Mr. Rose's. Motion failed, but it is what it is. And so we will move forward and we will hopefully get it right for everybody in this room.
Amen.
Okay, well, we have plenty of opportunities for people to talk. There there's more coming up on this, but. So I I I don't feel like we're shorting anybody. We're we're in a public hearing right now. That was well advertised and we have a lot of people saw it and depending on what has happened now, they'll see the next one we have and we take action. But to the point, I would like to see. Paragraphs one, one, two point, one, one, seven through one, one, two point, two, two, the hygienic. Paragraph struck from the next version we see. And I'll just go through those. One is the insurance. Insurance is none of our business. We we're not, we don't have a dog in that fight. The insurance is for liability, the owner, we're not involved in that liability. I see no need for that. One, one, eight is the advertising. We have to have the number in the advertising. Again, I think that's some. A step that is not critical to the enforcement or to the problem we're trying to solve. One, one, nine is the neighbor notification. You know, if there's a problem, the neighbors are going to find out about it. I I think that's onerous. And one, one, nine is also the pest control, the famous pest control. That's a hygienic issue. We have no business getting into. One, one, two dot two zero is another one that I should, that I think should be kicked out. And that is the one with the sex offender background checks. And one, one, two point, two, two is the neighbor notification. Oh, one, one, two, one, nine is the pool. One, one, two dot two, two is the neighbor notification. I think all those, I think we ought to start simple, start small. Make, I I think the response is appropriate. One hour, it's fast, but. When we hear from the people who have dealt with illegal activities and fireworks and garbage and. Noise and beer cans and drunk stagger around the street and cars racing around the streets. We may have a different idea, but having someone respond. Frankly, the sheriff, if they get a higher priority than those in a noise call, they won't even, they don't even respond. So I don't think we can count on the sheriff to be responsive enough and they've not, they've proven, I think. From what I understand, they've proven across the state that law enforcement does not be able to get a handle on this. So. We need to have some kind of response where someone can get in there and shut this stuff down that we can count on. Unfortunately, the sheriff, this is a low priority. So those, I guess I could make that, do you need it as a motion?
No, mister, I just want to make sure we got, did you get all of them?
Did you get, did you get them all?
I have, what I have there is you, what you're doing is you're you're proposing legislation ordinance that will trigger the license and taxes. And the procedures to get those and you're dropping many of the provisions that deal with the conduct that occurs.
Yeah, the conduct, the hygienic, the notification, the advertising.
Even some of the app, the the application components, like proof of insurance, all of those things as well.
Well, the proof of insurance, I don't think we need that. I'm not sure why we need that. Somebody could explain that to me. I don't understand why.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, could it, could we clarify? You stated to remove the notification process to the neighbors, but neighbors, but could we include? Phone numbers, accessible contact information for the application process. Because when there's a complaint, we currently don't have a way to get a hold of the people who own the property. We don't have a phone number. We, but so we need our own internal, you know, licensing process is going to have to contain. You know. Information that we can get a hold of somebody by phone and email. To address any problems that there may be because we can't do that.
Sure, bring that back.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
What I'm hearing is everything stays in place until. One, twelve seventeen. All of everything after one, twelve seventeen.
And your notes, they can work in your notes.
Yeah, and I I can.
I think you can probably work from the mayor's notes, yes, cooperatively.
I think we also said that we want to get people to come in and talk about it from both sides.
Do we know, maybe we should contact the people who we know, I I'm thinking of Ranch Manana and I'm thinking of Highland. Of the two that I'm aware of that were egregious. We get them to come in and talk about what they've seen and we'll see if what we have left out of this would correct that situation. I I think the principle here is we can always add more to this, but we've really got a lot of things on the books that we don't enforce. And I'm really not interested in putting more stuff out there just for eye wash that we're not going to enforce. If it's worth. Writing up as as a code, it's worth enforcing. If it's not, then it's not. So.
Yep.
So. Mr. Town Attorney, so I guess we need a motion to.
No.
The first reading.
Definitely.
The reason you have to read, so we can get your input and come back with a new revision. You've given us direction, we'll take that direction and bring it back. In the meantime, we will talk to folks on both sides of the issue to get to get further guidance. Is that, is that, is that what you want us to, how?
That's, I I would, we've had four people who raised their hands that said they'd like to be part of this. Just find out their names, just have them give you their names and contact info. And then we also know there's a couple of people who complained about party houses and kinds of things.
Bring them in.
Everything they were worried about.
Pardon?
I think, I think we're talking about two separate actions here. I think this action is primarily business licensing, right, and sales tax. There's a second action. How do we get the dialogue going between the property owners? And the people who have complained about the party houses, two separate issues. I think we want to cover both of them. This just covers what Mayor Morris said, unless I'm mistaken.
Well, yeah, the hygienic, the boilerplate.
That needs to be addressed, but I think it needs to be addressed separately.
I think what the mayor deleted was almost everything that they were concerned about, with the exception of the one concern about having a business license.
The response is still in there. If, I mean, there has to be some kind of response. We can't, the sheriff is not, will not respond to a noise complaint. Or fireworks if they've got something else there.
And that does.
And we're all over the sheriff to give tickets out and enforce traffic, so.
And it's been my experience. It's it's. I can think of an issue where I had. Problem at Spur Cross where someone was driving a car over the desert and I called up the sheriff and I sat there and waited for hours. For someone to show up. I mean, they were just driving across. A pristine area with their trucks.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. What would the mechanism be for the weekends or holidays? Who would people call?
Well, there has to be, the response portion, there has to be a number in the in the, I left the response portion in there. Where the owner has to, if if there is a problem at the site, the owner has to have some kind of response to that issue.
Can I ask another question? If this goes forward with individuals who have active licenses, then be on the town website, so you would be able to get the address and the contact information. Since the town's closed on the weekends or. Then there'd be no mechanism on which to call. If you didn't know the owner of the property and the town's closed Friday through Sunday. Does anybody have a suggestion or an idea on that?
If if there's a complaint, it goes to the sheriff's office. Or town hall, through the town marshal, you talked about a noise complaint or.
I'm just.
Fireworks or something like.
Well, what would the enforcement be during non-business hours?
Friday, Saturday or Sunday.
Because the sheriff, calling the sheriff's office is an exercise in patience, if not self defeatism.
Do you want to recognize, Janet?
Mr. Rose.
Would you approach the podium then, Mr. Moore?
The purpose of having the license by the door, which your ordinance says you have it front and back, which I think that's kind of redundant. But if you have the license within ten feet of the front door. If the sheriff's called or if even a neighbor comes over, the name, a phone number of who to contact will be right on there. So it won't matter if you guys are closed.
But the sheriff can't go in unless there's reasonable suspicion, right? He can't go inside. Mr. Attorney.
So, so.
So Janet's right, if you, it, we have the license to be posted on the premises. So if someone went to the house, they would see the license with some basic information. We have to just make sure we leave that part in. And then they, we'd have a contact information.
Mr. Mayor, then would it not be legal to have those listed on the website so we would know? Which house in the community has a license to be for this purpose in the event that there is a problem? Or do you have to physically go to the house to get the information off the license that's posted?
Statute I wrote would require the license to be on the website, too.
Oh, okay, that's what I was trying to clarify.
What I'll do is I I I do have directions from the wall to take shooting for me. He's out. We're going to make sure the license requirement stays in and it was in one of the ones that we will put in. There is the issue of the the one hour, one hour that's still in, and I I even just to come back and we don't have guidance on what what you want to do. Do you want us to get input from constituents first or what do you want us to do on the hour?
Well, I I mean, my my view would be bring it back the next meeting and we can amend it. That that's an easy amendment. Remending the whole code is, we'll be here all night.
Why don't we come back with a blank there and still then in the next meeting?
And 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 a recommendation as to what's reasonable. How how are you going to enforce this without being coercive? Sorry? Yes, would you approach, please?
I would like to thank you guys all for approaching this in a very objective manner and trying to get both sides. I think that that's admirable. One of the concerns I would have is as far as even enforcing the trash portion. I can appreciate not wanting litter and beer cans and everything everywhere. Unfortunately, there's spots in Cave Creek, particularly Tandem, that have had septic tanks flowing for two months down the street. How can we not enforce that? And yet we're worried about the beer cans? I find that to be a little bit odd. In addition to that, though, I I just feel that. We're we're not able to. To take care of the other problems that we have. I feel like this, this is bringing on more problems for the town that that staff may not even be able to accommodate. We're talking about having to hire new people. There's obviously a lot of financial burdens and everything that goes with that. I just feel like this is a very, very large issue. And please take that into consideration that I feel like Cave Creek has a lot of other issues that may not be as monumental as some people think that this is. That we're having trouble rectifying those issues. I've been the victim of a noisy neighbor to the point that there was injunctions involved. It it's not pleasant and I can appreciate the fact that it's really hard to deal with living next door. But it is really concerning. In regards to the hour of response time. If you live in Tempe, that means you can't have an Airbnb in Cave Creek because you may not be able to get it there. If you live in Tempe, that means you can't have an Airbnb in Cave Creek because you may not be able to get it there in an hour. If you travel out of state and you go out of country. Can you have a backup designated that's your contact, how is that going to work, there would be no way that you can be there in an hour? But is the town going to dictate that you are not allowed to rent out your Airbnb? Or your Verbo while you're out of the country or out of state, just something to think about for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any last comments before we leave this issue? I guess we're on. We're on the next one. Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
Well, we have the motion.
We have, now we got to vote. Okay.
Tough job.
Well, yeah, it is. I've got to think all the time. So at this point, then we're looking for a voice vote, there's nothing financial, so all those in favor of the motion do. For number three, discussion first reading ordinance two zero oh two zero two three dash zero two, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it, moves a second reading seven zero. And. Ron, item number four, council discussion approval resolution R two zero two three dash zero three, resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek. Miracle County, Arizona. Declaring those certain documents filed with the town clerk and entitled medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation facilities amendments. And recreational marijuana charter as public records pursuant to ARS. Paragraph nine dash eight zero two, the development services. Director and is is this a? Is this a notice or is this the actual?
Mayor members of council, this is the same process as the the previous case, so you've got two cases dealing with the same thing. The first case on the agenda is the resolution adopting it as public record, whereas the next is the the actual ordinance that that will have a first and second reading. I did want to make, just use this as a segue to discuss weeds. We discussed stink net and the the brush clearing earlier. I did see.
That stuff? And I've been poisoning it all this.
I did want to mention that I've I saw fiddle neck. Recently, I hadn't seen fiddle neck in probably three years, so whatever we're spraying to treat the chamomile. Is obviously not working on the fiddle neck, it's kind of scary, I saw it out at Spur Cross Ranch along the trails up there. This weekend and I, like I said, I hadn't seen it, I thought we were through that, but just something else to be aware of. It's not just the globe chamomile or stink net that's out there. Once again, I informed Bill earlier today, as Bill is an old hat at the marijuana. Regulations and rules in the state of Arizona. He's actually done several of these ordinances and resolutions in other communities in which he serves, we're actually a little bit behind. The town of Cave Creek is on adopting regulations related to recreational marijuana. And I'll turn it over to Bill with that, thank you. All you're doing is you currently have one. One medical marijuana facility. The new legislation allows adult use, what we call recreational marijuana facility. The code provision before you marries up the two so that the restrictions apply to one, apply to the other. It bar and it does require transaction privilege tax, so you get sales tax off off the sales. It bar testing doesn't create any sales tax, so this bar is testing. It does allow cultivation at one location and allows retail, retail for recreational use. More than likely, it would be a dual use because the the state is giving these out sparingly. And my my, I suspect in my other jurisdictions, the medical marijuana facility has then applied to try to convert to a dual use. So all this does is it allows you to control medical, sorry, recreational marijuana facilities. It prohibits testing facilities and it creates the requirement for them to have a transaction privilege tax so that you generate tax. The this model is taken from the league model, it's taken from from other jurisdictions. Some of the other jurisdictions, they did allow testing, but you you can allow testing if you wish. I don't know if it adds much because one, it doesn't create any retail and I'm not sure why you want to have people coming into your town to test from. Marijuana, so it's your call, this is pretty perfunctory, it marries up recreational marijuana facility with medical.
Questions from council. Seeing them, we're on to public comment.
I have no public comment.
We're moving quickly here, all right, I'm looking for a motion to. On item four.
Hey man, I'll do it. Motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty three dash zero three, resolution of the mayor and town council of town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona. Declaring as a public record a certain document filed with the town clerk and entitled medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation facilities amendments. And recreational marijuana.
Second.
Yeah, we just, we just need to do this, but I mean, you know, the vote, the voters approved it, so we got to deal with it now, so.
As I understand this just puts it on the table so that we can go on to the next.
Are you testing?
Any other comments? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries seven zero, we're on to number five, council discussion approval of first reading. Of ordinance zero oh two zero, all right, let me start over. Council discussion and approval of first reading of ordinance oh two zero two three dash zero three. And ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, by amending chapter one fifty five dot C. Regarding operation requirements for medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation facilities and by adding title one fifty seven recreational marijuana.
Mayor members of council, I have nothing further to report. Answer any questions you may have.
This is this just adding the words recreational use or there there about.
This is a a new title one fifty seven specific to recreational marijuana, the town about 12 years ago adopted the medical. Marijuana chapter one fifty five. This has an amendment to that chapter to marry it with the recreational side one fifty seven. So there there is a new section that that's why we're doing it by resolution to adopt it as public record because it's a lengthy section, then. This is the ordinance here.
Other questions?
Yeah, in in the proposal, you have manufacturing of marijuana. Manufacturing generally is not something we would allow, as I understand the town core, so production perhaps could be. Stated there. I'm on page, our page forty seven. One fifty seven dot O six.
Well, then that may be a change. Then you need to look at pages, you need to look at. Definition fifteen one seven, one five seven point O two. Definition of marijuana establishment, this is taken straight from the league and all the others, this would allow manufacturing at a cultivation sites. So I can strike manufacturing if you wish in in letter N three.
As consist to be consistent.
No, no, you're you're now, you're taking your, this would allow that, so if someone wanted, for example, I I up in Snowflake, we had. And they wanted to manufacture on site, this would allow that.
Correct.
Here at all, and so at most, at most you'll have would be a retail.
So you don't believe there's a conflict between.
But I can make the change if you want to take manufacturing out.
Well, what I'm looking for is so that we don't have a conflict between language in this. Proposal and the language in the zoning. Well, yeah, Luke.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look and.
No, I'm talking about the zoning.
Oh, as well. Marijuana facilities aren't permitted in. See if I could remember the, in the commercial buffer zone. They are permitted by site plan in the town core commercial zone and general commercial zone. Provided there are a certain distance away from schools, public facilities, parks, all of those things, and there are also a certain distance away from other. Ones as well. So, but we can look, once again, getting back to N three and the manufacturing of marijuana products. We can look at how that interplays with the medical side and the cult cultivation centers as well, and that's all. Regulated through state anyway.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'll bring, I'll let you know at second reading what I find.
Thank you, Luke.
For the comments from council. There is public comment on this.
I have no one wishing to speak.
No wishing to speak, okay, then we are looking for a motion.
Make it motion to approve first reading of ordinance oh two oh two three dash oh three. And ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek town code by adding chapter one five seven entitled recreational marijuana. And amending chapter one fifty five point C of medical marijuana dispensary and cultivation facilities.
Second.
It's perfunctory, it's legal and we need to do whatever we need to do to to make it legal within our own ordinances.
Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And we are on to item number six, council discussion approval of first reading of ordinance oh. Two zero two three dash zero four and ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek town code, chapter thirty three entitled boards and commissions by amending section thirty three dot zero four procedure. Current A in parent establishing an effective date providing for repeal and severability, development services district.
Thank you, mayor members of council. Back in April of twenty twenty one during a work session. The planning commission was made aware that the town council meets at six P M. On the first and third Monday of each month and I I believe. They were a little maybe jealous of that, six P M starting meeting time and directed staff at that time and and I apologize on record. That it's taken me this long to get here with that, but life happens, so this is at the request of the planning commission to move their. Meeting time back from seven P M to six P M and with that, I'll answer any questions.
Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing, so the public hearing is now open.
No one wishing to speak.
No one wishing to speak, then public hearing is now closed, so we are looking, we. Did we have the motion? We're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance, wait, are we seven or six?
Where's?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, six.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance oh two oh two three dash oh zero four. And ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek town code, chapter thirty three, section thirty three dot oh four. Procedure A thereby adjusting the start time of the planning commission public meeting from seven o'clock P M to six o'clock P M.
Second.
Makes sense to me.
They better not be late.
Other comments?
We don't want jealousy in this town.
Seeing no further comments, we called for a vote, I was in favor of this, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, mayor members of council.
Thank you.
Now we're on the political side, council discussion approval of resolution R two zero two three dash zero four, resolution of the mayor and town. Council of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, opposing senate bill number one 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 seven housing. Semicolon infrastructure placed on the agenda by the mayor. In our earnest desire to protect the town. We have a resolution here which I will read. This is a resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, opposing senate bill number one 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 seven housing infrastructure. Whereas senate bill one 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 seven preempts municipalities and charter cities in all housing matters. And prohibits any undue burden on a developer and whereas senate bill one 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 seven abolishes the citizen review process. Let that sink in, for residential and multifamily developments preventing residents from learning about the project or providing feedback. And whereas senate bill one 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 seven violates voter approved general plans. The general plan statute and the voter protection act by allowing developers to ignore the plans that are developed by residents and. Whereas senate bill one 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 seven prohibits planning commissioners from reviewing housing projects, getting community input. And providing recommendations to local councils and whereas senate bill one 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 seven. Prohibit cities and towns from prohibiting the use of accessory dwelling units, including accessory dwelling units to be occupied by a person other than the owner. Essentially preventing municipalities from regulating peer-to-peer platforms such as Airbnb. And now therefore is it is resolved by the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek as follows, the mayor. And council declare their opposition to senate bill number one 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 seven in order to maintain the principle of local control. Our quality of life and the livability of the town of Cave Creek. Question from council.
Is is this the four thousand square foot lot thing that the 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 mental midgets downtown have come up with?
Yes, one one provision of this is you cannot have zoning a lot, this is the lot size, the lot. Which is smaller than many houses in town. Greater than four thousand square feet, it does not apply to Cave Creek because it's twenty five thousand over. Until the first time we turn something down and then I'm sure it will be expanded, so if this goes through. The floodgates are open, you will no longer be able to plan this town.
Do you know who is behind this bill?
Senator Kaiser, he is in the district next to us, Peoria, kind of that way, right next to us, adjacent.
Insanity.
Other other questions? Looking for a motion, I'll make it myself.
There's public.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
David has to talk about this, he's one of screaming about it last meeting.
Thanks, everybody, David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. Yeah, I believe Senator Kaiser's. District is kind of within the Moon Valley area.
It's right, right, it's in, I got left in Peoria and right next to us.
Yeah, but I think it goes up to Thunderbird. At any rate, I just wanted to give you a few words of encouragement, this is really positive, I'm glad to see that. This is being done or discussed and I wanted to just say thank you for your efforts. Hopefully this does some good, it's a striker bill, it's still active as of late today, so it could. Could be part of the new. Arizona. But again, thank you for your efforts in trying to defeat this horrific bill.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
No additional comments, so. I will make the motion since I put it on here, motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty three dash zero four, resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek. Miracle County, Arizona, opposing senate bill number one 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 seven housing semicolon.
Second.
Comments?
Thank you for being proactive, we appreciate it.
I'll bet the reason they're doing this is in in that district because it covers that chip plant, he's looking for. High density housing to make for the people that actually work there, you know what, they can live like everybody else in town, in my opinion. An area.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Last item on the agenda tonight is council discussion approval of resolution two zero two three dash zero five, a resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek. Miracle County, Arizona, opposing senate bill number one zero six three and house bill two zero six one food. Semicolon municipal tax semicolon exemption. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll just say that whereas a town of Cave Creek would lose more than one point five million dollars in revenue that funds our fired emergency services. And other critical infrastructure projects should seven senate bill number one zero six three and house bill two zero six one become law and. I'm going to paraphrase this, the elimination will likely cause local tax increases. The elimination will likely cause local tax increases or service reductions. And three point two million residents will not see any benefit from lending them paying this tax. And Arizona's who purchase purchased their food with SNAP and WIC benefits are always exempt from the tax. So the poorest will not benefit from this bill. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, as follows. Section one, the mayor and council declare their opposition to Senate bill number one zero six three and House bill two zero six one in order to allow the town of Cave Creek and all cities and towns to retain the tools necessary to meet their community's fiscal needs and to provide quality services for the town of Cave Creek.
Second.
Now in the in the in the question section. So I think we talked about this quite a bit. Any other questions? Public comment?
David Phelps? Janet Moore? Thank you, Janet Moore, Cave Creek residents. So this bill and one 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 seven, one 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 seven is just a ridiculous bill. But the real reason why that was brought up was because of developers constantly being fought against people that really don't even live in the area, things like that. So this one I decided to talk on because it's kind of related. We need the tax money and a white paper was done. Back in twenty ten, an area eighteen was set aside to be tax revenue. But that was shot down. My proposal was shot down for what I wanted to do, which would have given tax revenue. And now you have a situation that's out of your control. If this gets passed, that's going to cause us to have a tax burden because we will no longer have the tax revenue coming in to pay for the fire. So I just have to say that. And I do want to comment, this gentleman here mentioned about how people come in and orchestrate. And that was done from to me. I couldn't even believe it when I heard it. He knows. They come in and they orchestrate and they lie and they don't even live in the area and everybody believes it. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Phelps?
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. I'd just like to applaud your efforts. I'm trying to push what push back against the goofiness down at the legislature. Thank you.
No additional speakers.
We are looking for a motion then.
I'll put it away. Yeah, it's yours.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution R two zero two three dash zero five. A resolution of the mayor and town council of town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona. Opposing Senate bill number one zero six three and House bill two zero six one food semicolon municipal tax semicolon exemption.
Second.
Comments for me? This is. Amazing. One year we do great things on on the town financing with all kinds of. Back clips and the next year we have something like this that cuts the legs right off from underneath you. I just, it's just unbelievable and we have been down to talk. Vice mayor and I went down to talk to our legislators on this, one reached my telephone. We got no promises. Let's just say that. That's the reason for this here.
In the late eighties, early nineties, I was a member of Moon Valley Country Club and there was another member named Sam Lewis who was in charge of the prisons here in Arizona. And anytime the Arizona legislature was in session, I could tell. I didn't much care about government or politics at the time or what they were doing, but I could tell legislature was session by Sam Lewis's wristware. He wore a Mickey Mouse watch when they were in session. And I wholeheartedly understand that at this point in time.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bunch, I should disclose that I was his lobbyist during most times.
Were you really? Are you accusing yourself?
No.
I'm kidding. Other comments?
And again, just thank you for being on top of the issue. We appreciate it.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.